All right, welcome everybody to the May 10th meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board, our pre-hearing work session. You're watching cable channel, what is it?
1303.
1303?
Yes.
Make sure you stay on this wonderful channel. Allison, would you like to call a roll please?
Mr. Hetzke?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
We started seven live in five, I'm just gonna die laughing one day.
Wait till we get our bumper band. All right, minutes.
Yes, minutes were provided from April 12th and April 26th. I hope everyone had a chance to look at them. Sorry they came in a little late, but I hope everyone had a chance to take a look. If there's any questions, comments, corrections, let us know.
If we could do the April 12th minutes first. Motion to approve, second.
Okay, Hetzke?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, April 26th. Motion to approve, second. Second by Burton.
Thank you. Hetzke?
I abstain.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, Zachary?
Well, he even got the formal Zachary.
Is it Zachary?
It is, it is. We usually don't hear it here though. So, you're in trouble? Yes, I am. I guess we'll do the table items then.
Yes, you will.
If you're ready.
Yes, you will.
So, we have three table items. However, our conversation tonight will be very brief. The first application that's tabled for baby landing, no action is required at tonight, but for the public that's watching, I just wanted to inform everyone that on May 16th, next Wednesday, the Town Hall Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM for the applicant's request to rezone a portion of lands from R-120 to LaSalle's Landing District. It's approximately 5.8 acres of land that would be rezoned as part of the project in another phase that they're looking at for what's proposed as apartment units down there. So, the public hearing will take place next week, but other than that, there are no other updates.
So, it's next Wednesday at 7?
7:00 PM in the auditorium here at Town Hall.
All right.
Other than that, no action is required by this board.
And going live via channel 1303.
You heard it.
Where you can get all your Pennfield information.
So true. Moving on.
Okay, moving on.
Second tabled application, 2316 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road for the law office that's proposed. The applicant sent a message to staff earlier this week requesting the board table the application as they're still reviewing elements of the project before providing those updates that have been requested. No new updates, no new information has become available since it was tabled at our last So unless there are any questions from the board at this time, we would just ask...
They're taking a table or motion table?
Yes. So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, they needed, I understand they need an opportunity to think this through because there were a number of changes and requests for additional information.
Certainly.
That came in a short amount of time.
All right.
Okay, Hetzke?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And the third one, for Wilbert's expansion for vehicle storage on the property, they have continued to ask for no action taken by the board as they're reviewing some of the history with the zoning board right now before they move forward. So again, no action is required tonight. And that concludes our table items. We have a couple of action items this evening. The first one is for 1677 Pennfield Road. What timing you have Spencer, what timing?
He's been waiting in the hallway.
For Pennfield Storage, they're back with a minor building modification request. As they were putting the building plans together, it was discovered that the height of the building was not tall enough for the elevator shaft of the three-story building that was approved as part of the site plan. The building mod and on their letter of intent, the net increase of a portion of the building would be three feet, seven and a half inches, bringing it to a total of 37 feet, seven and a half inches, still below what is required by code. The code maxes out if...
Or allowed by code?
Yes, allowed by code, sorry about that. So, the height of the building is still compliant, and I just wanted to show some of the elevations because they are adjusting a portion of the building to accommodate the elevator shaft. As you can see from, yup, from the view there, there's a couple images, the left side of the building, that's the portion they're gonna raise up to accommodate for it, they've kinda even it out.
So, is that the east end of the building?
The southeast corner, because of the way it all faces.
Okay.
If you pull the rendering that they provided as well. So kinda from a ground view, that's what the building would look like with the adjustments.
Right, and behind that is Home Depot.
Correct, behind the site is Home Depot.
Yeah, you're correct.
On that date. Okay, anybody have any, are you done?
Hmm, yes.
You wanna keep talking?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No objections at all?
I have no issues.
Does somebody wanna move to approve that change?
Second.
Burton and Tidings.
Hetzke?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Okay.
We'll be in touch, have a good night. The last item, as an action item, is for the previously approved office building at 1600 Pennfield Road. Their one-year expiration date for site plan approval is coming up this month. They've submitted a letter to the board requesting a one-year extension to the approval. The board approved it on May 25th, 2017. This site has been granted previous extensions to its former project in the past by this board.
So, if there's gonna be any dialogue, I need to recuse myself.
I need to rewind that, thank you.
So, recused.
Do a second.
Yeah, I'm staring at it too.
When was the original approval?
For this office building?
Of this one, 2017, that year ago?
Oh, May 25th.
Yeah, I would say we should go ahead and do that. One of you guys wanna move it?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Hetzke?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else before our hearing?
I'm done talking.
Okay, we will recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock upon the dice for the public hearing portion of the meeting. Too bad we don't have a band to play music in between.
Good evening everyone, and welcome to the May 10th meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone, thank you for coming. We have two items on our agenda tonight. We have a sketch plan and a preliminary and final after that. The sketch plan, for those of you who do not know the terminology that we use here in Pennfield, the sketch plan is a, an informal application or idea for a project that an applicant has. As such, a lot of the specific details have not been completed. It is an opportunity for that applicant to share their idea with the planning board and with the public so that we can get some feedback and offer feedback to them regarding the proposed project. The way our process works is the applicant will present their proposed idea, the planning board will ask questions, then we open it up for the audience to come on up and ask questions. If you wanna make a comment, raise your hand, I'll call you up, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and address your comments to the board, not to the applicant. All right, everybody understand that? And please turn off cell phones and vibrators and pagers and stuff like that. And Zach, read the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Marcus and Associates PC, 930 East Avenue, Suite 1000, Rochester, New York, 14607. On behalf of Richard Smith, request an informal discussion before the board with plans for a four-lot subdivision to develop four single-family residences with associated site improvements on a total of 4.3 acres at 280 Panorama Trail. Property is now or formerly owned by Richard Smith and zoned R-120. Application number 18P-0019, SBL number 123.16-1-22. Go ahead Larry.
Great. Thank you. I'm Larry Heiniger, Vice President of Engineering for Marcus and Associates. This is our 30th year and my 40th year in engineering. Grew up in Pennfield. With me, Richard Smith on the left, the owner of the property, who is a forester, and on the right, Jim Lebel, who is a craftsman carpenter. Appreciate the board hearing this and willing to answer any questions that come up. All right, so, I think Rich bought the property a few years back, originally was thinking of building his own house down in the Dell, realized that building a road down there for one house was gonna be very expensive, and it had numerous conversations with Mark Valentine and Jim Costello, and they said, "You need an engineer." So, they located me, and we originally came in a few months ago to DRC with five lots on a town dedicated road with cul-de-sac all over the 20,000 square foot requirement. The guidance from the DRC was, we think that five lots is a little aggressive, but more importantly, the town maximum road slope is 8%. Private drive is 10%. We have approximately 400 feet of road at 2% per 100, that's an eight-foot difference in getting down to the valley floor. So, the cul-de-sac is sitting on terra firma now, under a dedicated scenario, it would have been eight feet of fill. And in one hand, you avoid the expensive concrete gutters, on the other hand, people theoretically all love concrete gutters, but I think private drive, like Panorama Trail, again, growing up in Pennfield, I'm familiar with the Reines', the Volkers', the Ballistiers', all the private drives up in this neck of the woods. We don't think there'll be any problem selling three lots and Rich building his house there. So, we came back with the four lots on four plus acres, and our minimum lot is 41,383, well over the 25,000 square foot requirement. The road will be the standard town road section per the detail. Instead of being 12 feet wide min per your town code, it'll be 16 with two-foot stone shoulders both sides, so a total of 20. Water will be Mono County Water Authority with a hydrant down at the cul-de-sac, and the sewer will be E1 grinder pumps. Every homeowner will have a grinder pump pumping out to a check valve and then tying into a dedicated force main that's probably about an inch and a half diameter, and Mark has indicated that this has been done elsewhere in the town, so this is not new territory. So, that covers the road, the water, the sewer. The next two, and this comes from Ralph Peak way back when, the big five, drainage and traffic. So, we've done a SWIP and indicated to Mark that in that SWIP, there's basically no flow coming in here or here in a 10-year...
Larry, do you mind picking up the...
Yup, I got it.
Hand help.
In a 10-year event? This is .06, .06, six one-hundredths of cubic foot per second, so pretty negligible. And the other one is 1.9 coming in from the ravine, and I traced this back up, there's a 12-inch RCP reinforced concrete pipe under Clark that runs through the ravine between, behind Huntington. So, our sizing of an 18-inch culvert under this person's driveway, which was a thumb in the air at the time, and a quick calculation, that will, that'll hold up just fine even for the 100-year flow. And traffic, if you want, I can give you the number, but it's .75 vehicles per hour for a single lot, single-family home. So, three cars per hour, I don't think it'll be that much, and that's peak hours, 7 to 9:00 in the morning, because these are targeted at people like myself, baby boomers that don't want a big house, don't want a big lawn, and want a first-floor bedroom and stop going on stairs. We received the comments, and I responded to all those in writing, I can read through them if you want, all right? And so, at that point, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions Larry. The first one is, how do you propose to maintain, is that better? How do you propose to maintain the stone shoulders and the driveway coming down over the life of the drive?
Well, there are typical shoulder details, your town roads, something like Gloria Drive would have a stone shoulder, so that's what we would do, but we could also put it in 18-feet-wide hard asphalt. The thing is, you are gonna get a transition from asphalt to lawn.
Right, so, you know, just from the standpoint of, you know, having difficult weather conditions and difficult freezing conditions and possibly needing an emergency responder up there, you get the outriggers on a, on a large fire truck, you know, a few years after this is built with the stone shoulders and a steep condition, and I'm just wondering if you've considered, you know, some type of protection for the stone shoulder or even protection for the paved edge?
I think what we would do, I mean, again, I looked at your, your section and code for the driveway, the minimum width is 12. To me, that's inadequate, okay? If you have 16, that's two eight-foot lanes and you've got a shoulder, so if your tires are running on number 1A gravel, you know it. If it makes more sense to go to nine-foot-wide hard surface lanes right to grass, we could do that. So, what's on the drawing right now is 20 feet of hard surface, okay?
Which, which state law requires anyhow.
Right, and then down here, on this rendering, I have decreased the size of the center island. I have, it's the standard outside radius of a town cul-de-sac, the 40-foot radius, and the, and a wheelbase 30 vehicle has a 42-foot radius, so you're good by three, and the sweep area of a wheelbase 30 is 13.6 feet. So, I have now increased this to basically being a one-way, counterclockwise, 20-foot-wide lane, which is where, that's where the outriggers are gonna be, which is why we wanna get down, we're starting to run flat in this area. So, up, up in here, we're at the 10% slope, which is the town, the town max. Down in here, we dropped to a 5% slope and a 3% across the cul-de-sac.
And you saw the Fire Marshal's note about wanting that entire cul-de-sac paved?
I saw the note, but I'm questioning if you have a detail from 2013 with the grass island and the DEC stormwater regs encourage green infrastructure, why does that comment pop up? Do you have a townwide initiative to eliminate your islands? Because I know other towns that are excavating out asphalt and putting in islands to reduce the imperviousness in the overall town.
I can speak to that Larry. We are trying to avoid landscaped islands wherever possible, especially on dedicated roads. Obviously, this is private. The Fire Marshal did express his concern just regarding the turning radius and accessibility for large emergency vehicles, just makes it easier to navigate when the whole surface is paved.
Okay, and as I said to Jim and Rich, if they really, really, really want it paved, we'll pave it. Now, any of you familiar with Randall Arndt's work, Rural by Design, some of the planning books? Well, the village of Honey Eye Falls made it into his book because they have a cul-de-sac with a 90-foot radius, I believe, 180 feet all around. So, if you wanna pave, it's similar to your other detail, we can do that. We'll move, we'll move the water garden that's here right now in the SWIP to another place. There's water gardens here, plus the fifth is there. We'll pave it.
So, those are really Town Staff comments with respect to maintenance of snowfalling and so forth?
No, if you really are eliminating your center islands and you found it to be an issue with fighting fires, it's not a problem, we'll do it.
So, my next question is, how do you feel about Staff's comment with respect to turning this now into a three-lot subdivision?
I don't agree, and I addressed it in my letter.
We haven't seen your letter.
Thank you. Larry, can you describe for us, in layman's terms, how the proposed roadway would be constructed?
Yes, I will. What do you want me to do, you know, you talk about the lot first or the roadway construction? We're on the lot four issue.
While, while he's reading that, if you could move on to...
All right, well, the roadway is... It's gonna have to be done, but I discussed with Rich, he's probably gonna need a winch cat to get a track machine down the slope. Once the track machine's down the slope, then you can excavate the pond which is in the dry to start moving material up onto the slope. Will be...
So, you're excavating a pond using the fill?
The insitio soil.
The soil from there to create a...
Right, and that pond is not on the stream, that pond is in the dry. It will fill up after we're done. So, that is gonna generate a certain amount of material which can be calculated. Then, Rich has already been sourcing other sources of material that would be suitable for road embankment. They would have to be brought in, dumped, filled, impacted, six-inch lifts. The other thing that I'll look at is similar to, I'll call it Pennfield Road, not Old Pennfield Road, where they've got the ready stone, and then they've got a one-on-one slope above that of whether or not we would be better served more economically of doing a ready stone and then a terracing, which is, reduces your amount of fill. I've engineered things like that before, both gravity systems and with tiebacks. So, does that answer the question? I mean, it's gonna be a kind of a slow process, we can't...
To a degree. I guess, I for one, guess I'm imagining a bunch of large dump trucks parked perpendicular to Panorama Trail, halfway across Panorama Trail, dumping soil.
Initially, that might be the case. Once we get an embankment in, then they'll, they'll be taking the material down and dumping. It depends how much material we can generate in the site that can then be worked up the slope by a dozer. On the question of lot four, the first question was that the slope was steep. It's five feet and 40 or seven degrees, that's inherently stable slope. The slope stability of this material is probably up around 30 degrees. The rear setback is 30 feet, currently we're showing a 50-foot setback. I've used extremely generous building pads, 40 by 60, which is 2,400 square feet. These homes are targeted to be about 1,800 square, and the footprints might be 48 by 36, which is 1,728. I like to use a larger pad because I've seen where people use pads that are smaller than the homes, and the grading has not been designed to accommodate it, and it just creates trouble. So, currently, the lot width at the setback is 120 feet, 100 is code, and the distance between the two swales at setback is 140 feet. So, the front corners of the building pad are 30 feet from the northern swale and 35 from the northeastern swale. I talked about that with Mark Valentine a few months ago, that I was intentionally holding that type of separation, because if for some reason I wanted to do a one-on-three slope, I could bring the pad 10 feet above the stream elevation, and I could also use some landscaping type retaining walls. And again, this is, this is generic, this is not a specific lot-to-lot based on a building pad. I just actually completed one in Greece for a very specific 2,200 square foot house backing up to a stream. Okay, so now we get kinda cool and technical. The elevation of the northern swale perpendicular to the front corner of the pad is approximately 311.7, and that's feet above sea level. With a pad elevation of 319, finished floor 15 inches higher, 320.25, and a basement, 12 courses at 311.25, we don't anticipate a problem. So, I'm telling you, okay, yeah, the basement is .45 or five and three-eighths inch below the stream at that point. The flow from the northern channel in a 10-year event is .06 hundredths of a cubic foot per second, and a 10-year event is 3.66. That's like a 12-inch pipe in a 100-year event. With a channel gradient of 5 to 6.6 in this reach, so the channel is flowing down 5%, the propensity of water to go horizontally subsurface through a soil media with only a .45 foot of differential, think of water like electricity, I'm giving one a huge pipeline to move that way, and I'm giving the other one basically insulation to go that way. Don't see any issue with the, the water on the basement wall, and the other thing is, we're probably gonna adjust the cul-de-sac a little bit, adjust the grade, adjust the pad, and we, also what I pointed out to Mark is, when we do the footer drains, all of these pads will drain by gravity. There won't be any need for electrical-powered sump pumps. This is gonna, the pond will be down at elevation about 299, and my lowest floor, finished floor is about 14, so this basement's gonna be about 05, so six foot higher than the pond. And then on the... On the other swale, the elevation is actually lower, it's 308.7 at the front corner, 311 at the back, and it's 60 feet away, and the channel gradient is 3.3 to 5%, and the flows are 1.9 to 12.7. So, the 18-inch culvert is gonna flow about 24% full in a 10-year event, and it's gonna be probably about 85%, you know, at a 100-year event. You probably know this, but normally you design storm drainage for town roads at a 10-year storm, county roads at a 25-year storm, and then state highways, maybe a 50-year storm. So, I've got a driveway culvert that's designed for 100-year flow. I guess it all comes back to, when I laid this out, I looked very carefully at whether or not this was a buildable lot, and it's a very buildable lot in my opinion. Otherwise, it wouldn't be on the drawing, it wouldn't have my seal on it.
So, notwithstanding the, the comments from Staff on your responses, should the board be willing to consider this four-lot subdivision favorably? Would the applicant be willing to limit the pad size that you're describing, including the foot... the footprint of the garages? You tell us.
You're just asking a question.
Well, you, you're using some statistical data about the size of the footprint of these foundations, which I assume did not include the garages, so I'm, I'm just asking the question to clarify what it is we're asking, we're being asked to-
In my selfish best interest, I'm gonna say yes. Because I can't stand it when I ask a builder, "What kind of house are you gonna build?" And it's not gonna be any, "Oh, it won't be any deeper than 48 feet." And next thing you know, he builds something 56 feet back.
Well, on this site, that might be a problem.
Right, it absolutely would be a problem. And I don't like it, and it, it puts me in a very difficult situation. So, the simple answer is yes, we can work with some pad sizes that include the garage, because these are probably gonna be, I'll say, Cape Cod's or smaller ranches. That way, with a cape, you get your first-floor bedroom, you get two bedrooms up top, kids come to visit, grandkids visit, but you're not doing stairs every day.
Okay. That's all I have, Adrian.
Um, I had one question, Larry. Could you, could you describe to what degree the, just as in general, to what degree the fills and cuts are on the parcel?
Simple answer right now, no. Rich has asked me the same thing. Let's get to this meeting, let's find out the answer. Then we will do a surface of the existing, a surface of the proposed, do the sections, know how much fill is needed to create the section, do the negative side of how much fill can be created, and then we'll have a number for you.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why I said, you know, would I be better? Here's what you should know. We have, I, I looked at this as a 50-foot right-of-way. Old, you know, kinda old-school, not a 60-foot standard, but a 50, not 49.5, not three rods, but a 50-foot private right-of-way. And we are 2% on the road, one-on-three, town standard, out to that 50-foot right-of-way. And then, as Mark said, we do allow a two-on-one to reduce the fill, which is a 25-degree slope, and it is, is stable. So legally, an attorney, we have a few, will write up, we'll give him that description of the road and the cul-de-sac, and all four owners are gonna have access to get there. That's where, now, once I get to the edge of that 50 feet, what is the most efficient way to get down to the valley floor? Is it to go out on a two-on-one, or is it to use the ready stone and do some, some tiered retaining walls? In which case, then we would put guardrails up, so that someone doesn't drive off and, if they drive off down a two-on-one, I think they'll be okay. If they go bumpity bumpity bump down a terrace of ready stone, probably not such a hot thing. But there are, and that really doesn't matter, there are more dangerous situations in this town and other towns than what's on this drawing. And I don't consider this dangerous, or I wouldn't have my seal on it. So, we will get to the answer, 'cause we need to know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will open it up to the audience. Would anyone like to comment on this sketch plan?
Good evening. My name's Ted Nixon. I live at 326 Panorama Trail with my wife Kathy, who would be here tonight except she had cataract surgery earlier in the day, so she's out of commission for today. So she sent me off with her instructions, and her instructions were-
She'll have clear vision in a couple days, right?
Yeah, there you go. Maybe she should've been here. She sent me with her instructions, and that is to explain, we live at 326, which is right up here, okay? We border on the gully, um, and so we get a chance from time to time to take walks down there and to see it firsthand. The one thing that struck me immediately when we bought the house 10 years ago was how far down it goes relatively quickly. It's really a steep drop. Now, we are at the top of our private drive, but it's still a, a steep drop. And the other thing that struck me very much about it, which hasn't been talked about tonight, is there is an incredible diversity of animals, plants. It is really an interesting landscape down there. We get visited regularly by some of the animals that live down there, included but not limited to turkeys, deer, coyotes. We had a raccoon on our bird feeder tonight. But there is just, it's quite a wonderful combination of, of living beings. And of course, with the, with the water down there and the plants, I mean, you know, when this was first, you know, flown, the idea of, of trying to build this, build something down there was really shocking to me because of the environmental impact that it would have. So, I'm just passing along my concerns in that, and I'm not an engineer, I don't know how far, you know, how wide things need to be. I know that we have trouble in the winter getting up our driveway, that's why we both had to get four-wheel drive vehicles, and the drive up our driveway is a whole lot less steep than the drive down there. But that's not what I came to say. What I came to say is, this is a very, I think, precious combination of life down there. And I think you ought to consider that before you decide you're gonna go in there with bulldozers and, and develop it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this?
Good evening. My name is Lydia Slusarek. Me and my husband, we live at 270 Panorama Trail. We have lived there for 38 years. Our property borders the plan in this area. I'd like to make two key comments that we see every year. One, there is not a single year, there hasn't been a single year in 38 years that we have not experienced terrible erosion of the ground around our property. Our driveway has yielded. Posts that have been built along the driveway now are leaning almost like ready to fall down, and constantly we have to fill or repair the back of our house in order to ensure that we don't have any major structural problems. Second, again, there has not been a single year where we have not seen many trees falling down, and we have been extremely lucky that the tree has not damaged our house yet, even though we have trees that were like from here to where you're sitting, falling down. So the ground is very fragile. Obviously, in addition, we have wonderful animals that visit all the time. We have, uh, we had Trillium, which is Penfield flower, that grows in the area, and although the house is very, very nice, because it has a nice, uh, private area behind it, it's a continuous problem. The ground is extremely porous and prone to sliding down the ravine.
Thank you.
And by the way, I am an engineer.
Anyone else from the audience like to, yes, ma'am, come on up?
Kathy Heinegg, I live at 15 Hickory Lane. This is my backyard down in the ravine, so I'm certainly gonna follow up with the beautiful vegetation and animals that are there. I think one of my concerns that I have noticed in the 14 years that we have, we moved to Penfield, uh, because we liked what open land there was, I, I now, on my way to the Y in the morning, see what has happened on Creek, so that hundreds of beautiful trees have been taken down. Anyplace we go, we seem to be destroying some of the land in Penfield by building instead of having it be a bit of a rural area. If you didn't wanna move out to the country, you could come to Penfield. But I'm very concerned about what's down there. It gets quite wet, I'm sure they're planning to do something about that by filling, but I think it's a concern, and I think traffic will be a concern. The school bus stops along there, and it will be, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out. I noticed you have a, a speed timer up there now by that area, and usually the traffic is going 45 miles an hour, not 35. And I think it's, I just think it's a disadvantage to see this happening to beautiful land. I don't think it's necessary, and why you would want to build down in a hole, I'm not sure that I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Horowitz, living at 300 Panorama Trail. Our property is adjacent to the subject site that is about to be, that is being reviewed. One item that I think is of particular concern to me, and I think should be, of course, to the town, is the safety of vehicular travelers along Panorama Trail. Panorama Trail, as you are well aware, is a very strongly-used road artery in the town. The prospect, the safety prospect of people coming up the, this private drive or proposed dedicated drive is of concern, I think, regarding public safety. I also am concerned about the stability of Panorama Trail. Right now, we have experienced a, I think, a storm catch basin that the bottom fell out, and the pipe is gone, right close to the Slusarek's house. So, I would be very concerned about the stability of the intersection of a private drive to Panorama Trail and the safety. I'm not so sure what that landing area would be, or how that would be designed, because in the winter, with the ice and the snow, it gets very precarious. I know from my own driveway, it has a steep incline, that we have to be extremely careful in those kind of weather conditions. So I, I just wanted to point out those aspects of this development. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to comment on this? Going once, twice? Okay, anyone else from the board? Have any more comments? Larry, do you have any final comments, or?
Um, yeah, a couple things, a couple things I'll, I'll address there, and things I forgot. So, um, we know it's, it's steep, we know there's slopes. We understand that there's diversity of wild turkey, deer, didn't know about the coyotes. Raccoons don't surprise me. With regards to the property to the north, Rich originally suggested that we bring the road in up here. I looked at that slope, you know, what you can see that I'm doing is, I'm going down, I'm tucking into the bank, and I'm going down, and my toe slope ends obviously before the property line. When I did a similar analysis on this one side, it really didn't work. I also did notice the slope stability, and you can see how tight the contours are here. And I also noticed a gazebo out here, right at the edge. Some of you may know I'm a former government official and with state code certified. The gazebo is not a habitable structure. If it was, it would be in violation of state building code, being too close to the top of a bank. It's right in your site planning, first couple chapters of the code. So, as far as the pad's concerned, this is, right now, dialed in to be 20 feet at 2.5% before we drop, that could be adjusted. The other reason I wanted to stay to the south is because the town has had their issues with this storm sewer, and Jeff Benway went in and put in two sticks of 18 to bring it out. We were intending on going back to the original 24-inch, setting a manhole so the town could get to it, and then extending out of that manhole to wherever our, our slope ended. So what's, here in dark green is undisturbed, what's here in light green is currently disturbed. We intend, about the tree inventory, we'll set a survey gun up here, shoot down to the floor to pick up probably station 150 or 2, and then do offsets, so Rich knows where the edge of disturbance is, so he can locate trees and tie them to known points, and then we can put it into a, a base of the trees that are there, what's dead, what's invasive, what's in good shape, what's eight inches or over. The soils are ATF3, which is Arkport-Dunkirk Colony, so it's basically colony silt loam in a very steep variant, so it's sand. I'm, I'm familiar with the material. We're not doing anything steep like Mother Nature did, so I know the kind of slope that'll hold, but again, we're dealing with one-on-three, one-on-two slopes. As far as traffic, we did a site distance analysis, the tightest is this way, and we meet the New York State DOT guidelines for 35 miles an hour. Actually, anyone here's got an ear with the county sheriff, I know you have a substation right up the road, but people come here around the bend, and they're coming on an upgrade, and they got their foot on the accelerator, there's a really good spot to shoot radar right there. So you just step out of the car, wave them over, write a ticket for doing more than And actually, I'm the engineer that called Mark about the catch basin. That was the day that we were out there doing the site distance analysis, and I noticed that the catch basin and the gutter had dropped, and as a former town engineer, I said, "This is not good. It's Friday at 1 o'clock, they need to know something about it, it's gonna rain tomorrow, and this would be a real mess." So he thanked me, I can send you the email if you like, you can confirm with him, that I'm the guy that alerted your, your engineer and your DPW. And they put a sucker truck in there, pulled out about 20 feet, and dropped, I think, two sticks of, Zach, do you know, 24-inch pipe they dropped in there, down to the, and then poured a new concrete, poured concrete around the annular space and set a new DI rim.
I'm not sure of the size of the pipe, but I do know that they did the work for the repairs.
Right, so that's kinda slick way how they did it. Cleaned it all out, then dropped a couple sticks of high-density poly in there, filled in the annular space, and then built a new catch basin up at the top of the road. That happened, I think, maybe two Fridays ago. 413, that was the day we did the analysis. And that's about it. Are there any questions back at me?
At the moment, no. Okay, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Chris.
And we will move on to our next agenda item.
Application-
Application number two, O'Neill-Rodeck Land Surveying Associates, PC, 5 South Fitzhugh Street, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of James Cottone. Request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary final subdivision approval to allow for a two-lot subdivision with associated site improvements on a 1.4 acre property located at 1761 Cuatro Road. Properties now are formally owned by Mansell W. Gale, Living Trust, and Mansell Gale, and Zoned R120. Application number 18P-0020, SPL number 123.08-1-5.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Johnny, it's Tomaso. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner, James Cottone, who's in the crowd here. And also Peter Buckley is here as a consultant for us. From what you just said, there's, Mr. Cottone actually owns the property. It is in his ownership. He owns the property located at 1761 Cuatro Road in Penfield. We're here tonight to present the following project for the planning board's review. We are looking to subdivide the existing property at 1761 Cuatro Road into two lots. Lot number one will contain the existing house and garage with 20,097 square feet or .461 acres to the right of way, or 23,067 square feet or .530 acres to the center line. The lot two will contain a new single-family home building lot with 40,454 square feet or .929 acres to the right of way, or 42,929 square feet or .986 acres to the center line. We have completed all necessary required forms for our presentation this evening. And you also have a copy of the survey map that was created by Scott Measley from O'Neill-Rodeck Land Surveying Associates, showing the two parcels as lot number one and lot number two. The character of the land is flat, no water courses exist on the subject property. Single-family residential is in harmony with the master plan and surrounding properties. The proposed action will run with current development regulations and specifications. Street layout and design is not applicable to our application. Street name, of course, is the existing address, Cuatro Road. Arrangement of the lots is to create two lots and the property is shown in our survey map. No drainage improvements are needed. Utility sidewalk and pedestrian access and conservation easements. The subject property has an existing sidewalk in place and the owner is willing to grant any required easements that the town may require for access to the sidewalk area. No pedestrian easements or conservation easements exist. And parks, open spaces are not applicable to our property. Density calculations are not applicable to our property. And special benefit districts are not applicable to our property. On-site sewage disposal approval from Monroe County is addressed by the engineer. Documents required for dedication to public improvements is addressed by the engineer as well. We also received a response letter from Monroe County Department of Planning and Development stating that they have reviewed this application and they do not have any comment. We are working with the engineers to accommodate requests from the county in regards to showing existing or any proposed utilities on the plan. So we are, we are and will be working hand-in-hand with the engineer, town engineers in Monroe County to complete all necessary documents to create this two-lot subdivision. And just wanted to thank you for your time and ask you if you have any questions.
John, the one comment about the exit door steps on the porch to comply with the current zoning, what's the plan to, I guess, remove or take that door out of commission?
Yeah, we boarded it up for now, but we will anticipate doing whatever we need to do to make sure that that is either repaired or replaced or whatever the case may be.
Okay. That was the only issue I saw or I guess comment.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Any plans for the house right now, Jen?
Uh, we're not, Mr. Cottone's not really sure what we're doing yet. We're trying to get a plan ahead of, try to get some focus and see what we're going to be doing between the two properties.
So do you intend to build a house on speculation or is this intended to be a lot for a custom home?
It'll be a lot for a custom home. It's almost just shy of an acre. So we anticipate putting a custom home on the, on the property, Jen.
And could you show the board on the map approximately where the pad would be?
Where the?
The house pad would be?
Where the house pad would be?
We anticipate it coming in here and probably into this area, to the guts of the property.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application?
Can we just take a look at the plan? I haven't seen the plan.
Sure, sure. Does anyone else have an actual comment? Come on up. You do. You do, you'll be on TV. There's millions of people watching. You'll be a star.
This is, this is part of the...
Sure.
I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Josie Consilis-Matafora and I live right next to the property. And I know my husband isn't here, but the lot is pretty wooded and, and wet. And we were just wondering how much of that wooded property is going to be destroyed and cut away because, you know, we really kind of like that setting and just wondering how much, you know, on our property that was going to be and is there going to be a road that's going to, you know, how is that going to all work with the new home? That was the questions that we had.
Well, it would be potentially just a single-family home. So it'd be a driveway, not a actual road with two-way traffic. I don't know if, John, you want to answer more of the questions here?
Yeah, we would, we anticipate just putting a driveway into the house and we would, of course, love to leave as many trees as we possibly can because it's a better seller for us too when we put a custom home up. So we'll take out trees that we need to build a pad and whatever other utilities we have to put in and then we'll try to just leave everything else the way it would be.
Okay. Come on up. Whoever wins first.
My name's Dave Uhaysey. I'm here with my wife Laurie. We live at 26 Waterbury Lane, which backs up to a portion of the property. If I understand correctly, they're planning to leave the existing home and garage and build a home somewhere if you're facing the property to the left of that existing home. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I can attest that the back of that lot is extremely wet. It is a swamp. It is a wetland. Our property over the last 25 years on Waterbury Lane has continued to become more wet as the years have developed, as I think all the people who kind of back up to the basin would attest to. If I was looking at planning, which is not my job, if you look at a Google map, the most logical plan for that lot would be to kind of finish off the original mark for development, tear down the existing structure, put two houses on Baird Road and not have to deal with the extremely swampy, wet backyard of the lot that I guess they're looking to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir?
I'm Jim Vercruzzi. I live at 1767 Cuatro. It's the property to the south. It is very wet. I'm very concerned about any building and displacement of the water. There is a drainage problem there and I don't want it to wind up in my basement. And even to put a driveway into the back of the property, there's going to have to be quite a bit of fill. It's at least six foot below road grade. Could be eight. I haven't measured it, but it is quite low. So any displacement of the water would be a very big concern of mine. So and say that, excuse me, to say that there's no drainage problem is a underestimation. There is a severe drainage problem there. The water does stand there almost year-round. So very concerned about that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Like to comment? Anyone else from the board?
Jen, I just got one question. Wouldn't it be better to make the two lots like equal or no in this case?
We, we talked about that as well, but it's just, we feel that with the existing structure and the date of the structure, if we redo that house, it would be good enough with that size lot and then we can actually put a nice custom home on the bigger lot is what our goal would be.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Laurie Uhaysey, 26 Waterbury Lane with David. I just wanted to report that one of the homes that backs up to us on the loop, what is the name of the loop? North? Northcroft Road or Northcroft Loop. They, we, of course, were wet there. We're the lowest lying area. Everything drains from the town of Penfield pretty much right through our yard and through the back of this property that you're speaking of. But when one of the neighbors behind us on Northcroft regraded their hill from the original grade, it caused additional water problems for us. So we became much wetter and have a lot more problems because they, since they've regraded. So I'm concerned about any regrading of the property that we're discussing would, again, force additional water because once you take away all those trees and brush, that helped to absorb a little bit of it. I think we end up with more water. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Does that land, Jen, runoff? Isn't there like a creek or something that runs back there where that land should all, the water should all run, you know, run off?
I believe so. I'm not positive.
Yeah.
It's a concrete basin. There's a town concrete basin that runs behind that property.
It's spring fed from up on, up of Scribber.
Okay.
That is, that is a question. What is the plan for the water?
If you have comments, we got to come up.
Okay.
Just so it gets all on the microphones and on the record and...
My question is simple. What, what is the plan?
Okay, if you don't mind introducing yourself.
My name is Sue Vercruzzi. My husband just spoke earlier. My house is right next door.
We anticipate working with the engineering here, Scott, to make sure, provide the, you know, take care of some of the water issues. We, we build homes all the time and we work with the town to make sure that we don't have water problems in anybody's basements and things of that nature. So we will work with the engineering departments in all, both the county, town, and to see what we can do to make it, you know, make it work.
Okay. Got another question. Do you have another question or? Okay, come on up.
My name is Kevin Drew and I live at 1771 Cuatro. The backs, back of our homes, there's only about a foot down in that basin. There's only about a foot of topsoil. Are they going to dynamite to build a house back?
It's solid rock. It's solid rock down there.
We haven't, we haven't done any hole tests or anything like that this time, so I can't answer that.
Okay.
Also, are they going to have to bring the, the grade up? Are they going to have to backfill it if they don't? Because right now...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, sorry.
No, are they going to have to bring backfill in? You know, I don't understand it because what, right now, they can't even plant trees back there. Bakola came back there and they tried to plant, they wanted to plant trees in the huge basin and Bakola told the owners, you can't because there's only about a foot of topsoil. So my question is, again, you know, we have, it's rock in there. It is a swamp all year long. There's no question about it, like, and you can hear it. I mean, it's just like, it's, the water's back there and it's a catch basin. I don't know, I just, I'm just concerned about the dynamite. If they're going to have to blow up the, you know, the area, it's going to affect the foundations. I'm concerned about that.
Okay. I have a couple of answers just for everyone's concerns right now. A lot of your, all of your comments are extremely welcomed and certainly valid when it comes to site plan review. This application right now is only for subdivision approval to split the lots. To build a home on that new lot, they would have to go through a formal site plan review with the town staff, which would involve bringing on an engineer to study the drainage, to come up with a plan so that none of the water, storm water generated on the site affects the properties around it. It would have to come up with a plan to handle what's there, treat it, contain it, let it drain to where it needs to drain to get whatever, to get to whatever inlets are around there. If they have to install a new catch basin inlet, that has to be done. Regarding blasting, that's not permitted or allowed by the town for foundations of basements. We only allow blasting for utilities. So that would be something that their engineer would have to look at when designing the site plan for that future home. But right now, as, as the applicant has stated, they don't have that information because, again, right now, they're only asking for approval to split the land. All that information would come at a later date when they submit an application for formal site plan review and we would handle that upstairs in the engineering and planning department. At such time, we would notify the neighbors that a plan has been received and that you're welcome to come in and take a look at it. But all these comments that you've given to us tonight, we will pass all those on to the town engineer so that when that time comes, a site plan comes in for a home, they have all those in their hands as they review the plans so that they're addressed at the time. But right now, we simply don't know those answers because the engineering work hasn't been done yet. So I just wanted to get that out there for everyone who still has concerns about that. It will be addressed. It's part of our job as the town of Penfield to look through that, just don't have them right now.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much for coming. We'll call this hearing closed.
First item.
Are we going back to sketch plan?
Yeah. Unless you guys want to do the hearing first, what's your pleasure? Sketch plan first or, or?
I defer to the chairman.
Let's do...
I defer.
Yeah, let's do the subdivision. Pressure, remind you.
Turn the page back. Sorry. Meanwhile, Doug's opening up 20 more files.
I don't care about that.
He's better at it than I am.
Or that subdivision without getting into real detail.
Hey, guys. I'm sorry, we're picking up everything on the audio. Just take it outside.
Thanks.
That is a viable, buildable lot. The question may be where the house is, but there's no problem subdividing it.
In terms of the subdivision?
Yeah.
Exactly. It is a compliant subdivision. Both lots meet code requirements for minimum lot size. As I said during the public hearing, all the comments were extremely valid to get a better history of what's out there. And those are all things, those existing conditions, drainage improvements, so on and so forth. Those would have to be looked at under a formal site plan application, which isn't part of this request.
Just, excuse me. My guys were asking, do we stick around or?
You're welcome to, to sit and watch from the audience.
We discuss their project.
We'll discuss their project later.
We will be discussing their...
Okay, we're sticking around.
We'll be discussing it.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
Where'd we leave off? Oh, Bob's question, okay. I answered that.
It's a compliant...
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
Yes. Are there any other questions from the board or points of discussion? So...
No, we have a draft approval resolution.
Yes, the completed EAF, as well as the resolution, were provided in advance of this meeting for the template for everything. If there are any other concerns from the board, you know, open up to a vote on that for approval of the project for the subdivision of lands?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the EAF. I'll second it.
Hetskey?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And also move to approve the resolution. I'll second that.
Hetskey?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Sketch plan.
I'll say.
Have you ever heard the term, "Get more bees with honey than you do with honey"?
Who kind has?
Flies.
We need to screw that up.
I like his better. I like his better. Bees are nicer.
Maybe that's...
Why are they always trying to attract bees? They lost me there.
Why don't we just try flies?
I don't know. Why would bees try to attract bees?
I don't know. So I don't know where the expression came.
This is a great back and forth.
I just know the, the subtext of what it means.
Fly the bees, fly the flies, fly the bees, that's what it's about.
Obviously, it fell flat. All right.
I'm just going to open up to you guys.
Thoughts?
So my first thought is, having just seen the responses to staff comments is a little premature. You know, it's, it's, you get a difficult site, and, you know, with, with some difficult issues, and a, and a very, you know, interested public in the immediate vicinity. I think, you know, less than a day's time to review responses from the applicant is not sufficient for us to comment or advance...
Fair for us to sit up there and be expected to read through a letter and have...
Or, or even down here. There's, there's a lot of information here, and, and, you know, my, my first thought was...
It is a sketch plan.
And the town planner made a comment with respect to the density. We got a very elaborate response back, but what, what Zach was sharing with me up on the dais was that his actual response to a decrease in, in the density is not contained in this response letter. Rather, it was in an email that was forwarded to Zach only, at which time he said, "I disagree, and I'll provide you with some further information." So...
If I could clarify what my comment was, too, in the PRC manual. What we see on the plan is the existing conditions of the site today, when we look at the lots and the pads of the homes. The only proposed grading that's shown on the plan is for the driveway and leading to the cul-de-sac. The rest of the contours we see on there are existing today, because they went out and shot the topo, the topo, and surveyed the property. My concern for lot four, and I think all staff will, will share my concerns, is that you have the presence of two existing drainage ways in there. Now, they're not identified as stream corridors or waterways, but as you can see from the topo, and as they described, the elevation creates a natural drainage way through there, and placing a home in that lot, in, in that proposed lot on that existing slope, I, I, we had concerns for that.
About diverting water around the footprint of the building?
Diverting water, impacts of water to that home, impacts to whatever the slope may be that would be required to create a usable lot there. Obviously, you'd have to cut into that slope quite a bit to give someone a usable lot, regardless of the size of the home. And it is sketch plan still, I understand that, but this is the time to get those comments out there. So my concern initially was, or my suggestion was that this, that the proposal may be better suited for a three-lot subdivision to avoid disturbances to some of the hillsides that exist there today. There are the presence of steep slope e-pods on the site. Our mapping is, is a reference. It's not completely accurate, because when, when topo was shot initially and we created e-pods, a lot of that is interrupted by the tree cover. So when our e-pods were generated, some of that is slightly skewed because of the tree cover. Obviously, the site is surrounded by slopes. It is a, it's a valley. So, you know, our job as staff is to look at that and, and to make suggestions to try and protect some of the environmental features that are on the property today. That's, that's where my comment came from, and Jim, to your point, there might be a better response to that comment from the applicant later on, if you're looking for more.
So, Mark, what do you think? You've been down there.
Yeah.
And, and to the extent that there's scouring on the backside of these lots up above, and any disturbance of the natural drainage patterns could increase scour up there.
Could it be argued that it would decrease, or it has a chance to decrease it as well? Or, and this is a, I'm speaking from someone who's not an expert in the field.
They would have to...
But a change, because a change could improve or...
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be tough either way. You know, you remove the root structure, which holds the slopes together, but then, you know, maybe there's just too many variables, I think, right now, to kind of determine what is going to happen if, you know, they did go to open this, so. It's hard to say right now. I'm thinking there is the potential for more erosion. Obviously, the site is showing that currently along Panorama Trail, but there is the potential for other areas to do that as well, so.
I think Mike hit it right on the head. There, there's a lot of unknowns at this point, it is, because it is sketch plan. More things would obviously be provided during a formal site plan review.
Yeah, but advancing a sketch plan...
Oh, I agree.
For a three-lot subdivision versus a four-lot subdivision, that's an entirely different animal. So, you know, I, I think to the extent that, you know, giving the additional information that the applicant's consultant suggested they would provide to you in that email that you've shared with us, along with giving us an opportunity to read their responses to staff comments, will lend itself to table like this.
Oh, yeah. Before we get a letter out? That would be... Okay. Terry, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think it should be table. What about the traffic? They, they covered everything about the visit, site, the distance, the stuff that's often covered, as far as traffic?
Yeah, they provided stuff. I haven't been able to fully review what they've provided. I, I remember as being acceptable as far as the code requires, you know, the state DOT requirement, so.
I think the concern for traffic was more during construction.
Which is a big thing. It's a brown...
That's going to be a big thing.
We can always make a condition for traffic control. That's a, that's a separate animal. I, I fail to see how, you know, three or four single-family dwellings is going to have any impact.
You pay them, you have traffic.
Traffic there.
No, that's a, I'm really not a bad...
Providing the site distance is what we would look for there anyways. I, I agree there. During construction is your short-term, but concerning.
Some of the key things to me are, all right, if you have a driveway that's coming up to Panorama Trail or Road, private drive, does it come up to a landing?
They do have it graded.
So that you're like a flag, or you're sort of, you know, in a rocket ship, trying to pull up and out?
They do have it graded, so that, you know, you go up, like, in the center of the driveway, and then you come to a 3% landing towards the top, so that's something we would have designed as our own roads. So they are complying with that.
This entire driveline would have to be in place before you could put, you know, fully loaded concrete trucks in there for development of the houses anyhow, so.
Okay. So...
I'm here, we're starting to formulate just some high-level comments, but it sounds like the board would like a little more soak time on what was presented tonight, the responses to comments, any additional feedback that may come, that may come in for this sketch plan.
I'd like to make a motion that we would table the sketch plan application pending appropriate time for staff and the board to review the responses to the PRC comments, and to receive and review additional information that the applicant's consultant may provide with respect to their arguments for, for lots versus three.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Hetskey?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
So, just, just to recap for you guys, tabling the matter until the work session meeting in two weeks from now, May 26th. Give the board and staff time to review the responses to comments. I came in earlier this week. Come back at that meeting, and then have a discussion to formulate the board's sketch letter to give back to you as a response to what's been presented. Okay?
Five twenty-six is what day and what time?
Thursday, 6:30. Yes, sir. And that's all we have for tonight.
All right. Go for business.
You'll adjourn.
See you all in two weeks.